Again, welcome. And just a reminder, if you would, to silence your cellphones. And there's meeting documents at the end of the table here. And if you need a listening device, Robert in the front row would be able to help you with that. We'll start with routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
It's my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of April 21st, 2015.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $629,808.76.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Are there any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include $250,000 towards our fire departments in the county. For example, Colton got $18,000, Crooks $14,000, Del Rapids $24,000. This is just the first half of those distributions. Again, out of the $629,000 in today's bills, $250,000 went to the fire departments.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports, and there are none today. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for routine action.
Second.
Any comments or questions for HR? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item six is application for abatement. Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsa, Director of Equalization. We bring forward to you for your consideration this morning, three requests for abatements. And I've got to get the cheaters on because I can't read them anymore.
Huh.
The first one being from Heidi Skanky. I think that's how it's pronounced. Record ID 87011, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $208.10. We're recommending approval.
Any questions for Kyle? We need to take these one at a time?
Okay. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve RDID 8711. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
The second request is from Benjamin Davis, record ID 83978, for 2014 property taxes in the amount of $1,455.41. We're recommending denial. There was never an application on file.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to discuss that? If not, we have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor of the denial say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The third is from Debbie K. Ulrich, record ID 83494, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $1,611.27. Recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Show a move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve RDID 83494. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Item seven are notices and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of sale of county surplus property by auction for one John Deere 7210 tractor with Tiger mower, asset number 59150, by Wyman Land and Auction on June 3rd, 2015.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. So on January 27th, this commission declared our existing John Deere tractor, item number 7210, with a mower as a surplus. And as you recall, we kind of got a deal through the John Deere Corporation via James River out of Madison to lease tractors for a dollar. And so, just so happens yesterday, we took delivery of that tractor and the mower, and our staff is learning how to operate it and use it, and so it's all good. And so, here we are formally declaring our existing asset as a surplus item so it can be auctioned. It would be auctioned at Wyman Auctions. We also have a stipulation that we must publish it in a local newspaper, and so that's what this agenda item is for.
Does anyone have any questions for Shannon?
Is this a one-time lease, or is it...
It's for this year, and the program has been in existence for a number of years, and so we very much hope that it will continue. And I guess in the foreseeable future, we're kind of banking on it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of sale.
Second. Thank you. We have a notice, or I mean, a motion and a second to approve the publishing of a notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Item eight are planning and zoning notices, and there are none today. Item nine is a petition for compromise of lien. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have an application for compromise of lien number 66844 in the amount of $20,571. The applicant has applied to compromise this upon full payment of between $3,000 and $5,000. There's no real estate involved, but the applicant hopes to resolve the lien so he can purchase a home in the future. The original lien totaled $31,503 between 2008 and 2010. The vast majority of this, in fact, $30,692.23 was related to hospitalization and care in 2008. The other was $807.80. That was combined total for public defender services on three occasions. Through the annual lien cleanup, we reduced it to $10,929.3 annually. As you know, we reduce some uncollectible liens and some large amount liens to be more manageable if the applicant or if the party has passed away, or there's been no activity for X number of years. In any case, in the application, he says he had some issues for 22 years, cost him his family, home, vehicles, and job. He's now been sober for six years and is still trying to fix things up. He understands he has to repay this and is hoping that something less than the total amount can be arranged. The applicant lists assets of about $10,000 with a motorcycle, but he owes nearly $30,000 in child support, $1,100 to a collection agency, and a monthly vehicle lease of $447. His tax return shows income of $57,910, of which $4,200 was wages and salaries. The remaining was in the form of business interests. The applicant is present, and, you know, at this point, I guess maybe we could invite him to say a few words, but he doesn't have to come to the podium. He doesn't have to identify himself, and, you know, maybe he can explain why he thinks we should accept this offer.
Okay. As Commissioner Barth said, the person who is petitioning this lien can stay seated right where they're at. They do not have to come to the podium. They do not have to identify themselves. So if anyone would like to make comments, they're welcome to do that. If not, that's comfortable for us also.
How do you name?
Okay.
Like I said...
Could you speak up a little louder, please?
Yeah, yeah. I was a meth addict from age 14 to 36. I created a lot of wreckage in the years that I was using. I had 100% of all of my making. blew away my family, blew away my kids, everything. February, this February, six years cleaning. You know, I'm still in the process of cleaning up all that wreckage, and I know that this is a part of it. I looked in, tried to purchase a home so I could move out of my mom's basement with my kids. I've got an amazing relationship with my kids today. And I've come to find out, you know, we were looking at maybe buying fixer-uppers, live in it for a couple of years, sell it, and come to find out I cannot sell it because of this judgment of this lien. You know, it was an accident that got most of this bill. And I know that it can't just all be left to me and gone. I accept responsibility of the bills that I have not paid. And I'm just, like I said, I'm just trying to clean up the wreckage of my past and get all this behind me. Seems like every time I try to go and do something, something else pops up, and this is just another one of them. And hopefully, I'm getting to the end of all this. And like I said, I take full responsibility, and any help I can give is greatly appreciated. Basically, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Mr. Kelly?
Well, just a comment. I mean, you've really completed 12 steps, and I commend anybody that's coming off of addiction like that that can recover or is in recovery. I'd like to bring a motion of a payment of $5,878.80. We'd remove the lien, and I'll make a comment afterwards.
Mr. Kelly, would you tell me the amount again? $5,878.80?
$5,878.80. I'll tell you why in a minute.
I'll second that for discussion. Mr. Chair.
That's a...
Thank you.
That's 100% of the public defender services and the balance against the hospital bill.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
I appreciate that explanation, Commissioner Kelly. And I will say that one of the things that weighs in favor of an applicant anytime is if they've had a history of making payments, and you've not done that. We've had people that have come in and made payments every month for six years, and, you know, maybe just small payments of, say, $10, $25, but it sure does add in their favor. But I am somewhat appreciative of Commissioner Kelly's number based on, I know, his strong support for the public defender type issue, and I will support it.
Any other comments? I have to tell you that after I read through this, I'm very appreciative of the fact that for six years you've been sober. I think that's awesome. And, excuse me, and able to reclaim, if you will, your relationship with your kids. That's pretty neat. I'm going to lose my voice before we're done. We have a motion and a second to settle this lien for $5,878.80, correct?
$870, I thought.
Oh.
Is it?
80780 plus...
807?
So it's, yeah. Plus the 5.
So we have $5,878.80, correct?
Correct.
We're in agreement.
I think we need to roll call. Vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes. That's the deal. You can meet with staff, and they can talk to you about how that's going to work your way out of this whole issue. And thank you for coming, and thank you for giving your testimony. Good luck. Hopefully, we...
One more thing out there. For the last eight years of my addiction, I made it all personally use. Today, I have children's ministry theater and celebrate church, and I have kids, but addiction's awesome, so just figured I'd throw that out there.
Very good. Good luck.
Thanks.
Now is the time for an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make any public comments that is not on an agenda item, they can do that. Does anyone have any public comments? Good morning.
If he loses his voice, I guess he won't be able to. Ken? The handheld mic? Okay.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I am Travis Arnesson. 814 West 20th Street. From Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I'm with the Sioux Falls J.C.'s. And because we are a youth leadership organization... I would like my high school daughter to take over. Good morning, County Commission. I'm Grace Murray Arnesson, and I live with him sadly. Just kidding. At 814 West 20th Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We are here to ask your support of the 48th Annual 4th of July event. In total, it costs $40,000, and it costs $25,000 for the fireworks display, $3,000 for the inflatables, and the remaining money for EMT Food for Volunteers courtesy cards, supporting our troops, face painting, and insurance. We'd also like to thank all our volunteers. It takes a total of 40. And we'd like to thank our supporters, such as Grand Falls Casino Golf and Resort. They put on a win-win-with-a-bang. And this is if you donate $10 to the J.C.'s, they will put $10 on your member club card. And so, you're out nothing but fun. And Fry and Pan has also stepped up with a raffle. You buy a $5 raffle, and you get a coupon. For a buy-one-get-one meal. This is up to a $13 value. So you already win eight bucks. But the grand prize winner will win $500. Before you. To ask for your personal support. And the support of the community. If you want to volunteer. Donate money. Or just come celebrate with us. Our office is at 1,000 Northwest Avenue at Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104, if you would like to donate money. Our office number is 605-338-9741, and our mobile is 605-351-5034.
Thank you, Grace Marie, and thank you, Travis, for being here. Does anyone have any questions for either one of those individuals?
Mr. Chairman, I just would make a comment.
Yes.
In the past, we have been able to support you. I don't know that we'll be able to this year, but it is a great opportunity for you to bring this forward to the community and get some publicity for this effort. Clearly, the 4th of July fireworks at the... are an integral part of what we do on the 4th of July in the city of Sioux Falls. We also have other towns in the county that have their own celebrations. But those of us in the room and those of us watching, I would urge them to support the J.C.'s there. And again, their address is 1,000 Northwest Avenue at 57104.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Again, thank you for coming, and thanks for leading this charge, and certainly for your involvement and extra energy. We appreciate all of those things that you're doing for the community, and we will stay in touch.
Thank you for your support and time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a public comment?
I wasn't aware one of my neighbors was going to be here this morning. Just a little history lesson.
You're going to have to identify yourself because we have no clue who you are.
Robert Kobe, antagonist, city of Sioux Falls. You need the appropriate street address?
Please.
636 West 21st Street. How many of you know what CBM is? Just a little history lesson. It was about 20 or 25 years ago. I was going to say Commissioner McFarland because he's retiring and going to elevate him a little bit and clarify and verify what I'm going to say, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong. But we had a bid process for the food service at the jail, and we sat and we deliberated at great length, and two organizations came in, and one was within one cent per meal of the other. That was CBM. And that's also catering by Marlins, if you aren't aware. And so, we did what we thought was appropriate. Commissioner, I think it was Tweet, was the one who made the motion, and I think it was unanimous vote that we would give the local business its our business, and they have gone on to become a rather large regional force in dealing with institutional meals. And all because of one cent difference. They were close, but we gave them a shot, and they have gone on to become something of a great business asset to our community as well as to the region. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from anybody else on the opportunity for public comment? Yes, sir. Again, this would be in reference to anything except what's on the agenda.
Well, I don't know what's on the agenda. I got here late.
Okay.
But this is in reference to that Dakota Access Pipeline. Is that okay to talk about?
It certainly is. Yep.
Okay. My name's Orrin Guidy. My address is 46134, 263rd Street at Hartford. And I believe back in January, you were presented with the proposal from Dakota Access Pipeline about their route going west to Sioux Falls. And as a property owner, along with my sister and a few other landlords out there, we are opposed to having this pipeline come through our property for a number of reasons. I have three wells on that section, and I draw water out of. I'm not hooked up to rural water, so if they have a leak or something like that, it's going to affect my operation. I run about 200 head of cattle out there and about 75 head of buffalo. So it would take a substantial amount of water to supplement them if I have to switch over to rural water. And I like my drinking water. I've tasted rural water, and I don't care for it too much, but that's what I grew up with. So, and I've been living on this home place all my life, which is 56 years. And the proposed route is going to be coming through a pasture of mine, and this is where I have my buffalo confined, I guess. And that's only parcel of ground that I can put these animals on because it requires better fences, and the operation to move them to another facility is quite, you know, it's dangerous. Either a person gets hurt or an animal gets hurt, and I just soon enough have to deal with that. Now, they have not said what they would do to help me with that. In fact, they haven't really said anything in the last month or so because we have not given them permission to survey our ground, so they have put a temporary restraining order against us, and that'll be coming towards a judgment, I suppose, here in May sometime. So until then, they are not allowed to be on my property. Also, the property I have is going to be tiled, and I'm worried about them coming through and disrupting my outlet for my tile. And if they do have a break-in on that property with the tile, I imagine some of that oil is probably going to go downstream, which all flows towards Sioux Falls. So I would be a little concerned that you aren't concerned enough that maybe we should be a little more concerned about where this pipeline is going. Also, I'm three miles from Wall Lake, and I don't know if too many of them residents are aware of what's coming down the pipe, but if that gets into Wall Lake, I would assume that all that water is going to be contaminated, and property values would diminish. And one other thing, I've checked with the insurance for liability on this, and if I have an episode where I cause damage or something to a pipeline, I cannot get insurance to cover that. It's going to have to come out of my own pocket. And I don't know. I just don't feel that that's... It's my ground. I shouldn't have to put up with a private company coming through there. That eminent domain, I guess, is a big sticker. I don't have anything against that for public use, but this is a private company, and them coming through and declaring eminent domain on my property, I don't think that's right. But that's another issue. So I just wish, I don't know where you folks are at on this pipeline. I guess you've taken party status, but if you're going to do anything more than that, I don't know. But I'm just letting you aware that there's some people out there that aren't happy with what this pipeline is proposed. So with that, I guess I'm done with my spiel.
Thank you for coming.
Any questions?
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Guidy, those bison do represent a pretty difficult problem for you and for the people putting this in. A snow fence during construction isn't going to hold them back, and you probably don't want them falling into a 15-foot trench, et cetera. They've not had, and, you know, I think each of us that have gone door-to-door, have been in the service business, knows that every person has a unique situation. And I guess I would hope that, you know, your situation is certainly unique, but they must be able to solve these problems. And I believe we have filed for some interest in the pipeline, and we haven't... As a county, we don't have, I don't believe, a major issue with it at this time. I think you certainly have some very legitimate concerns there.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'd like to ask Kirsten to just tell where we are, that we have been following this thing very closely. If you could just explain a little bit.
Sure. I'll give you an update on that. We did intervene to obtain party status, which means we have status to, if we wish to, offer testimony, documentation, exhibits, et cetera, as we move forward in the process to preserve that right. We had to intervene for party status early in this, so we did that to preserve our right. If you choose to do so as representatives of the county to do that, at this point, we're in what's termed a discovery phase, which means the parties are posing interrogatories, requests for production, basically requests for documentation of, hey, what are you going to present at the hearings in opposition or in favor of the project? So that's where it is right now. We're in that phase where the parties are responding to each other with those requests. I believe the hearing is, the formal major hearing is set out for October at this point, but that could change. As you saw in the news with Keystone XL, that one has changed. It's a separate project, but those dates can change, so.
Thank you, Kirsten. I just wanted to point out that we are involved in this thing, and we are not... I just wanted to point out that we are involved in this thing and we are not letting it slide by.
Well, I'll just worry with the proximity to Wall Lake, but I don't think the public knows what's going on. We've gone to some people around Wall Lake and they don't even know, didn't even know about it. So, you know, the news media and stuff kinda haven't done too much with it either. We always see a big ad for XL Pipeline saying it's the best thing ever, but there's some stories out there that scare you.
May I ask a question of the?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Sir, have you intervened as, as having party status?
Yes, I got party status, my sister has, and there's a few other landlords. And we've hired an attorney to represent us, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Any other public comments this morning? If not, we'll go to item number 10.
Under regular business, item 10, review and consideration of applications for Minnehaha County Service Ambulance License for Dispatch Service Area 5 submitted by MedStar and Paramedics Plus. This was deferred from the April 21 meeting. Ken McFarland.
As you know, last week, you did consider applications for Service Area 5 that we had received from both MedStar and Paramedics Plus. The commission last week specifically deferred this action until this week in order to gather more information and I think too importantly to allow members of the public an opportunity to voice concerns or comments or opinions on this particular issue. As you can see sitting here before you today, there are three of you. And I just need to remind the commission, and I have in fact notified the applicants as well, that any action of the county commission, to be affirmative, needs a vote of three individuals. So if there is any dissent amongst the three of you and that an item is automatically deferred until the next agenda, which would be next Tuesday. And that, so you have in your packets both the applications from both firms, you have the review from Dr. Luther concerning his review of the applications. Both applicants are here this week if you have additional questions that you would like to ask of them. But this is the stated agenda time because of the specific deferral last week that you would consider this item. If you have any questions to me, I'll stand by, but the applicants are also here if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ken?
Not yet.
Not yet? We did hear the full applicant review, if you will, last week when you were all here. We'd like to not repeat any of that unless we have questions about that. If you have anything else to add, we certainly want to hear that. And then if there's someone in the audience who also wants to make a statement, we'd be happy to hear those also. So does anyone have any additional comments from last week as far as the application process and what you've already expressed us in writing and verbally? You can certainly do that.
Jay Mezier, MedStar Paramedic Ambulance, President, CEO, Brandon, South Dakota, and Sioux Falls. Just a couple of things I'd like to add. There were some comments last week made by, you know, the Humboldt folks who wanted to keep things the way they were and so forth. And I guess the point I wanted to make here is we're talking about Area 5 and they've already got an area and that's Area 3, so it doesn't really affect them. If anybody in those areas 1 through 6 want to use another service, even from Rapid City, to work with them if they're busy, they have a right to do that. So we're talking about Area 5, they have Area 3. Now, the other point I'd like to make, and I'm not sure, I haven't even looked back here to see who's here. I will say that, you know, the folks that we work with in Area 5, including Renner, we've got a great relationship with them. Split Rock, we have a great relationship with them. Valley Springs, as you recall back when we first started, they had some doubts. We have, they have no doubts anymore. We have a great relationship with them. So my point is, is we, the two people that you see standing here are sitting and standing in front of you, we not only work the streets, but we're the ones here talking to you. Everything we've gotten, we've earned, we haven't bought in anything. So as we go through this process, I just want to clarify that we will have an ambulance committed to Area 5 on the side that, you know, Mr. Kelly was concerned about with Wild Water West and so forth. You know, we'll have a dedicated ambulance on that side of Area 5. And plus, we also have ambulances, obviously, from Brandon that can get to Renner within 12 minutes and the Split Rocks area even a little quicker than that. So we have seven vehicles. And I think through the, through the progression of what MedStar has done, everything we have told the city of Brandon, everything we have told the city of, or the county of Minnehaha County, we have done that, we've proven ourselves. When Dr. Luther reviewed the applications, Dr. Luther himself said that he didn't see any differences in the company. But I think there's one big difference that wasn't pointed out. He actually reviewed our service because he's watched our service since we've been here. The company from Texas is brand new. There's not anything that he could have reviewed unless he went to a area in Texas to review that company. So I think some of that is speculation. But what he has reviewed with MedStar, he has reviewed. He has looked at our tariffs, he has been part of our service since the onset of what we've had with the county. And with that, I'll sit down, but I will say that we are, we're very excited about Area 5 and we feel we can do a real good job for the citizens there as we have in the rest of the area we've been covering. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two comments, questions. Commissioner Kelly? Jay, you indicated you're going to place an ambulance in a garage or something somewhere in that area between Renner and, say, Wall Lake Corner or something, right?
Yes, sir.
You will do that, you're gonna do that before the contract takes effect?
Well, recall now, we have a week or two, and if you vote on it today, we'll have one week less even at that point. So as any businessman would know.
You have it in sight, so I imagine, right?
Yeah, you know, in the meantime, we can put an ambulance in that area. It may not be in a garage right away because that all takes some logistics and negotiations, which we've been looking at, areas in that spot now. But the answer is we'll have an ambulance in that area when it takes effects, whether it's in a garage or not. But we will have a garage and a place to house that ambulance in that area.
Might be in your house.
My house is in Area 5.
From your door to Wall Lake Corner is about 24 and a half miles. And at regular driving speeds, it's just, just short of 30 minutes. I don't know what a code 3 speed, but I would imagine that would take five or, five or six minutes off of that. Is that, is that an adequate response time or are you gonna have to call on, call on your joint agreement to have a, somebody on site that can administer at least an EMT level or higher? Do you anticipate somebody like Hartford Fire or, 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 what is it? Paramedics Plus responding, or Sioux Falls Fire responding to those emergencies that are in that western and southern border?
Those are good questions. First off, we're gonna have an ambulance over there for that first call that comes in. So any additional calls, we, Gary and I talked about this and we've got six more additional ambulances at MedStar, so if a call goes out, we can take an ambulance and post it, say, in the Renner area to give that area a quicker response. To answer your question, right now, Hartford Fire does a fantastic job. They have EMTs and medics on Hartford Fire that are first responders. And they respond to most of that area between Sioux Falls and the Humboldt area there. So they already are first responders and they normally will get there between anywheres from 10 to 15 minutes. They're normally the first ones on scene as we speak. Again, the point is we will have an ambulance dedicated to that area. Now, most of the calls that we're talking about are gonna be from Renner this way. That's where a majority of those calls are, which are gonna be covered from the Brandon station where we have the majority of our vehicles.
Are you saying Renner to the east?
I'm saying from Renner to the east is gonna be the majority of those calls. And as you can see, we're stationed real well to handle those calls with a timely response. On the other side is gonna be not a lot of calls, it's gonna be the, less of the majority. And so, and to put it in businessman's terms, for us to put an ambulance on this side, we are losing money. To have the majority on this side, we can make up the difference. So as we look at this as business people and as paramedics and people that know that response time matters, that is why we decided not to cover the whole Area 5 from Brandon, but to put an ambulance in an area that we know won't make money. But we make that up through the other businesses that we do. So, and there again, if there's any question about that, that's how we've run our business since we've started.
Can, did you lose something in the contract when Sioux Falls changed? Did you lose the transport abilities within Sioux Falls?
You know, we, back when, when the administration took over, we were doing some things in Sioux Falls and we had lost those. Right now, there's some things in the city of Sioux Falls that we did lose. We were doing some contracts between some hospitals that we had to give up. And they made an ordinance now that, that there's nobody that can go into the city of Sioux Falls and actually do any transport at this time. It's locked down to one particular company, which is why we're taking that to a public vote. We're taking the non-emergency part of that action to the people and the people choose on the non-emergency side, not the 911 side.
Well, this ordinance, this ordinance change, Albatz Sanford has an ambulance and Avera has an ambulance. Is this gonna change that whole deal too on transports or?
No, and is this what we're clear about, the ambulances they have? Sanford has an ambulance and McKennan has, actually Sanford has two. And what that does, that supports their airside. So they can go from the airport back to the hospital. They support their airplane with their ambulance. That's all they do.
So if I saw, if I saw one outside of town, I'd wonder where the airport is. Is that, I mean, I understand going out to their flight services, but I guess I was surprised to see one down South Minnesota Avenue.
Yeah, they may have had something else going on.
Thank you.
I think.
Commissioner Barth, did you have a question?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kelly asked most of my questions. I guess I would ask one that I thought of during Mr. Mezier's answers, if I may. Jay, you talked about, you know, the distribution of business. If, if you found out that there was more business on the west side, would you adjust your plan?
Oh, absolutely. You know, we've, again, our history will prove that. Anything that we've taken with the county or the city, we have adjusted our plan accordingly, which is why our response times in the city of Brandon are absolutely less than four minutes per call. And our response time in the county far exceeds anything the county has recommended that we do. So our company has a standing history of, of watching the history of what's going on with our, with our call volume and doing what we need to do to be sure that the response times remain where they need to be. Having said that, Commissioner, as the Paramedics Plus, the Texas-based company said, if they get the territory, they would ask us for a mutual aid agreement and we'll do the same with them. And with the county ambulance services, you don't have to ask them because that's part of your county ordinance, it's part of your county license, that's automatic. So if Humboldt or anybody else wanted a mutual aid, that's part of our agreement that we've already got with all six or five services in the county. We would sign an additional one with Paramedics Plus to help them out in the city of Sioux Falls if they chose they needed that help or vice versa.
Other questions? Jay, with Rural Metro covering District Zone 5, do you know how their response times were? Does anybody know? I guess maybe that's a question for Darren or Lyndy Young here, but.
That's part of the county records, right? Darren would have that for me.
I'll let that one go. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any comments from Paramedics Plus who would like to add any additional discussion or?
Mike Bureau, Paramedics Plus in the city of Sioux Falls. I just wanted to take a moment to say, you have in front of your application, so you have the list of bin numbers there of the 11 ambulances located at, you know, at 4,000 there in the southern portion of the city. Rural Metro has been covering this area for a long time. I do not believe that they are unsuccessful, at least I've not been led to believe that in my conversations with the city and the county. We brought over their entire staff, they're familiar with this response area. So I just wanted to clear those two things up very quickly. If you have any further questions, I'll happily answer them, but otherwise, I'll take my seat.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
Sir?
Commissioner Barth?
Mike, what do you think your response times would be to, say, Crooks or Tri-Valley or to Wall Lake?
I believe roughly at this time in discussions, I think we're looking at about 15 minutes, depending on traffic familiarity, 15 to 20.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Paramedics Plus? We're good for now. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in behalf of their organization or their department, if you will? No one moving forward. Mr. McFarland?
He saved.
Commissioner, I just wanted to, I just want to remind the commission that this particular license is for the May 21st 19, or 2015 period through the end of 2016. County licenses are typically for two years. And so we will be going through this process again for all of our service areas sometime next year in 2016 for relicensing because we are only for two years. I also want to remind the commission that that is probably the time that the county will take a look and receive input from all of our ambulance providers about any suggestions that they may have for adjustments in the service areas and boundaries and then go through the necessary ordinance revisions to reflect those recommendations. But this particular license is just for the period of May 21, 2015 through the end of 2016.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Commissioner Barth? I guess I'd like to ask MedStar the same question I asked Paramedics Plus on their response time to Crooks and Tri-Valley and Wall Lake.
Go ahead.
I think I would probably go at the same time that, depending on if that ambulance is busy or not, the one that we have in that area. If the ambulance isn't busy, I'm looking at a five or 10-minute response time to those areas. If that ambulance is busy, then we're looking at either mutual aid or extended vehicle from MedStar. So, but the chances of that ambulance being busy and having two calls at one time in that area with the, with the park's population and the, and the call volume are pretty slim. So, but not that it can't happen, so it can happen.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I wonder if Lyndy Young or Darren Ketchum want to say anything, nothing from?
Shaking their head at this point.
If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer, but I don't have any.
Well, I would ask Darren, I guess. Darren, what, you better identify yourself.
Darren Ketchum, Metro Communications, Sioux Falls.
Darren, what has been the history of Rural Metro responding to the western portion of the Number 5 primary service area?
Well, as you're probably aware, the county's ambulance ordinance does not dictate response times from the station to the scene of the incident. The county's ordinance merely talks about from the time the call is dispatched to the time the agency acknowledges that call. That's really the only response time that's in the county ordinance. Not saying we couldn't go back and run a report to find out what that information is, but it's not something that's tracked today as far as how long it takes one ambulance to get from point A to point B in the county. So I couldn't offer you an opinion right now, I'd have to go back and run some numbers.
Mr. Chair? Yes, you know, I guess I've heard from folks in Sioux Falls that a response from Rural Metro often was fairly tardy and that the, I heard one person in a city group suggest that he almost called the helicopter for an incident on Minnesota Avenue because there was no ambulance available. Does that happen?
Well, I think that it's kind of a gray area because you look at the system we have in place, I think there's a misconception out there that people think when they call 911 that everybody's coming lights and siren as fast as they can. As you all know, we have a prioritized system that not every call results in a lights and siren response. You know, roughly about half, I want to say, in this area were lights and siren type responses. So certainly the calls that they're coming, you know, with the normal flow of traffic is gonna be a longer response time than those where they're coming with. is going to be a longer response time than those where they're coming with their emergency lights. So I think maybe that's part of it is just a misconception, you know, everybody, even here, I think at the county admin building, people wonder, well, why does it take so long for an ambulance to get here? And it's just because on a, I won't say it's not an emergency, because obviously if this is happening to you, it's an emergency. But in the grand scheme of thing, in a very large system like this, in order to most efficiently use resources and to safely deploy those resources, we, we don't send every call lights and siren.
Other questions for Darren? If not, we're good to go. Anyone have any other comments to make before we ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion and then I'll comment on it if I get a second.
And your motion is?
My motion would be to accept MedStar as the provider in the primary district Area 5.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second for comments?
You know, there's certainly been unease on the west side of the primary, that District 5, and I've gotten several phone calls from that area. I can also say, though, that there was vehement opposition to MedStar when they first got licensed within the city of Brandon. I know people in Brandon that were making arrangements to have their body dragged to the edge of town so that Rural Metro would pick them up instead of having MedStar pick them up. And then when they got the larger district, District 6, I can remember a fire chief in a neighboring town absolutely, basically pounding his fist in opposition. He's not opposing them anymore. The citizens of Brandon are not opposing them anymore. Those concerns have abated. I believe that MedStar has fulfilled every promise that they have made. They've, they've demonstrated this more than once, and I think that with their familiarity, with our county, they'll be able to cover primary service Area 5 well. And there's always the opportunity to change things at the end of 2016. And anyway, those are the reasons why I support MedStar at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
In, in Area 5 in 2014, PSA 5, there were 576 calls, if my math is right. Of those, 29 were life-threatening, were Code 4, which is a life-threatening situation. What we don't know with those, and I don't know if they have the information, is when a medical person was on scene, but that could come from Sioux Falls Rescue, Fire Rescue, it could come from Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff, it could come from, from one of the cooperating stations. So that, together with what they, I don't know how much of that transport there is in those regions, but I know that's a fairly lucrative part of your business, I imagine. Sometimes will keep you, keep you afloat in the weekdays. For that reason, I, I would like to give MedStar a chance. I think every time they have, we have done something for them, they have met the challenge. And I just think we, we need to keep, you know, I'm a little concerned that there's no transportation competition within the city limits now. I don't know if there's restrictions on rates, but I really would like to see MedStar have a chance at this thing. That's why I second it.
Any other comments, questions? Well, unfortunately, I have a difference of opinion on, the two of the comments have already been made. I am concerned about response times, and I also think that MedStar has a different communication system than the Paramedics Plus group has, which is the rural, former Rural Metro group. So the concern is a communication gap. And I also put a lot of credence, and frankly, the conversations I've had with people that are in that area, all highly complimentary of the existing staff that was with Rural Metro and felt that they were comfortable with people who had joined the Paramedic Plus group. So I will be supporting Paramedic Plus.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, keeping in mind that it appears that no action will happen today, I wonder if I might move to withdraw my motion and suggest deferring action till next week.
Be up to this person seconding it, if they would do that?
I will. It's going to be an automatic anyway. I will, all five of us be here next week?
As far as I know. As far as we know, all five will be here. Are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay. Commissioner is seconding the withdrawal, so this gets deferred one week to May 5th?
Yep. You did move and seconded?
Yes, he did.
Okay. And then vote?
We will vote. All those in favor of deferring this till May 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
What if it had not unanimously passed? I'm just kidding.
You get to sit here.
You can stay here forever.
Yeah.
We'll go to item number 11.
Item 11 is consider approval of amendments to the Minnehaw County inmate guidebooks for the Minnehaw County Jail and Community Corrections Center.
You don't look like Lieutenant Mattson.
I do not. I do not. Roughly the same haircut, but close. Jeff Gromer, the warden at the county jail, I'm just here for the second half of the approval of the inmate guidebooks. Lieutenant Mattson presented them last week. I believe you've had a chance to review them, and just looking to get them published.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gromer?
I have none. I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the county inmate guidebook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 12 is consider recommendation for requests for adoption of speed limits on township highways from various townships in anticipation of SDCL 32-25-9.2, effective date of July 1, 2015. Kirsten Katmeyer.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. I bring this item to you kind of mostly as, as an informational item today to kind of bring you up to speed on a situation we might have with township speed limits. It's been brought to our attention through the Highway Department that there may be some discrepancies between the township road speed limits currently posted and those that have been given to us as an informational matter and also for adoption under the primary statute to date, which is 32-25-9.1. Under that system, the township makes a request of the county commission to put speed limits in place of less than 55 miles per hour on any township roadway, and then it comes before you as to whether to approve or deny that request. While we were in the mode of verifying and cleaning this up through the Highway Department, a bill was introduced at the legislature this year. Let's see if I have the bill number correct again here. It's 1121, House Bill 1121. Essentially, in the spirit of local control, that gives the township boards now direct control over the enactment of lower maximum speeds on their own roadways. It will amend the statute referred to 32-25-9.2 to give them that direct authority to do that. So what we have now is the Highway Department was working on getting verification of an inventory of our township speed limits to date for the purposes of bringing them all before you for formal approval or denial. But in light of this new statute that I wanted to make you aware of, as a policy matter, you can certainly place that at this point back in the hands of the various township boards to directly affect those lower maximum speeds if they choose to do that. So I guess I wanted to inform you of that process going on and put before you whether you wanted to go ahead with the old method under 9.1 at this point, or direct that these requests be returned to the township boards for direct local control on those lower maximums. And I believe, Shannon, here you're the point guy for the Highway Department today, if they have any other questions about the Highway Department's role in this.
I'm here for that purpose.
Thank you.
Any questions from Kirsten?
Mr. Chair, Kirsten, so the speed limits that are shown on this printout here, those are the ones in existence that have already been approved by the county commission after the township request under the old system, since the new system doesn't kick in until July 1.
I believe the printout that you have labeled township speed requests are the ones that are before you now for consideration, not the ones that are, have been passed in the past.
Correct. Essentially, Mr. Barth, Commissioner Barth, that, that's the list of outstanding incorrect, illegal postings because the commission hasn't approved them. When we did our sign inventory for the sign replacement project, we discovered all of these speed zones that are not currently approved by the commission. And so by allowing the townships to do this as effective July 1, that's the list we're kicking back to the townships.
If I may, so for example, this one on River Bluff Road, I remember, I believe, when we reduced that, and so it's not posted to the lowest, to the lower level, is that the...
They may have chosen to reduce it further than what the previous legal posting was.
Okay. Does the sheriff get to know this for enforcement?
We get a call on occasion to verify such things. I don't know the method of, other than publishing it in the meeting minutes, you know, it's kind of a safe, safe assumption every black and white sign should be enforceable.
Commissioner Kelly?
Kirsten, can we, can we add anything to this bill or on July 1, the townships totally control the speed limits deals and the procedures and everything else? My request, it'd be one notification to the sheriff's office, and sometimes the townships are a little lax in their communications.
The new statute, while it gives them the power to enact it directly without your intervention or approval, if you will, they still have to do a formal notification, and that's the form that highway is prepared as part of this packet for the meeting that says, hey, you know, we're informing you that we have enacted this, this lower speed limit. That is still required by the new statute.
This is an example of what we're recommending as being the formal notification. Excuse me, this is an example of the formal notification form that we're hopefully going to allow them to, you know, streamline it. So, but number one, it's uniform. Number two, it's easy for them to do this correctly, and later on in this notification form, it leads them to kind of, based on some engineering and transportation principles, to post it correctly. And this form has gotten kind of, it's been well-received by the Association of Towns and Townships, and it's, I think it's being used by other townships already.
Well, I think that form at least requires some study into this thing and not just the desire to repeat people, but, and we would get that, and then we could distribute it, you could distribute it to the commissioners and to the appropriate law enforcement agencies. Is that what...
Commissioner Kelly, as it reads now, the townships would be informing, you know, that the little memo says to Minnehaw County Commission Office. So I imagine the commission office would share it with the sheriff's department as well as the Highway Department.
Okay.
Commissioners, what we would do in this particular instance, again, they would come to the commission office as kind of a central repository, as it were, at least the notification. But not only would these be going to the Highway Department and the Sheriff Department, but my recommendation would also be that, you know, you have a spot on your agenda, that a lot of times there's not even an item, you know, that requires your specific action on it, but it's under notices and requests. And so we would list these as a notice on our agenda that we've received this notice, it would become part of our minutes, so that folks would see that and be included in the minutes, and that's one of the ways of keeping the public informed that that has in fact happened.
It'd be just like the raffles.
Yes, it's a notice.
Kirsten? If I may add something, that method that Ken talks about, if you're concerned with enforceability, having that in an official minutes of the meeting shows that the county was informed of it. Therefore, if everything else was proper with the enactment, it's enforceable if we, if we or someone else has to go to court to, you know, on a speeding ticket, that we can point to that as proper enactment. So that does help.
Commissioners, I would add, if everything works correctly, everything's good. We have no control if townships are actually going to supply the notice. We hope, we hope that they comply with the law and do so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, do we need to take action on this?
Yeah, there is one question. That's if we don't take action on these, the ones that are requested here, are those the ones you do not have a request on and they would have to file one?
Are those, if I may, Commissioner, are those requests in final form before you right now, or they'll still be worked, be worked, are they still being worked out?
The final form as submitted by the townships was incorrect to the satisfaction of the old way. To do so would take quite a bit of time. We've spent probably 160 hours already dealing with some of these things, so it would be a burden on the Highway Department to do so, but we will do that if that is the commission's will. We recommend, frankly, to just kick it back to the townships and let them do the notice using this form up until July 1.
So if we do nothing, then everything just stays like it is until July 1?
Well, I don't think that's correct because the townships have sent these requests to the commission for approval as currently posted. They wouldn't be effective July 1 unless the commission directs us to act on them under the kind of old rule.
Right.
Which one makes more sense?
I recommend July 1. Kirsten, I believe, concurs.
I think you're going to be duplicating a lot of work twice if you do it that way. I would also add, I have some concerns a little bit that if we go through the old method, then we'll have to clean up the old method to have the new methods applied. I don't know how those two methods, if you impose one through the old method and they impose one through the new method, we may have to do some cleanup after the fact if we continue to enact them in the meantime. But you certainly can. You certainly can do what you want with these requests. That's before you...
Mr. Chair, I'm usually one confuses everybody else, but now I'm confused.
Yeah. What do you want us to do?
Do you have a suggestion?
Are you differing with...
No, I concur with the Highway Department.
That we just wait until July 1?
I concur that the best course of action probably is to send them back in the aggregate and have them enact them through direct local control.
As of July 1.
As of July 1.
So the motion would be to send these back?
Correct.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Second.
Well, I'm glad that Jeff is no longer confused.
That's not true.
We have a motion and a second to send these back to the townships and become effective as of July 1 as per the South Dakota codified law, correct? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, three to zip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Assignment Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports?
Good news yesterday, three of us went up, four of us went up to pier, leaving at something like middle of night, and we got there, finally, we got there two and a half hours early, but we were there to request at the E-Board, they had 19 requests for summer studies in front of them. They were going to pick two. So we were successful and we talked to, you know, we each made comments, not, not very lengthy, to the E-Board. There was some, I had written a letter to all of them earlier, and I think there was some conversation with, with some of the members. And I like to think that the fact that we were up there made it be one of the first items taken. items taken in the afternoon. And surprised to me, they made a motion to accept it and unanimously approved this one, and they went on to another one, and I don't know how many they considered, but we were, as far as I'm concerned, we were successful. As far as the sendings are concerned, they don't know. They, there will be a summer study on it. It's according to the paper, and I don't know, I got the feeling up there that it was pretty broad and that, I imagine, the chairman of that group will have, that'll be the legislators only, but obviously the public is invited in to talk. They have some latitude in what they're going to cover, but it specifically, Ken, do you know, is it specifically financial? The wording, I guess I didn't quite have, but...
Mr. Chairman, if you would just give me one second. The original text of the requested summer study was for a review of the functions of county government, law and regulations regarding counties, county revenue and expenditures, and alternative funding solutions. The scope of the requested study was to examine the duties assigned to the county by law and regulations, specifically evaluate expenditures for law enforcement, legal fees for court-appointed attorneys and prosecutors, court costs in county jails, and evaluate the transit and expenditures on whether costs should or may be transferred to another entity, review sources of funding available to counties, including taxes and fees, and determine whether the fees should be updated, revised, review the statutes for outdated and obsolete provisions, and make form and style changes to Title VII, and evaluate the fiscal impact on counties that have significant areas of property owned by the federal government or placed in trust, include other responsibilities given to counties to administer correction facilities, public infrastructure, document recording, registration, and elections. At the meeting, there was a specific request to expand that into the organization of counties in the state, how we are organized, and also to explore what kind of levels of intergovernmental cooperation exists between counties, municipalities, and then counties and townships and other counties, that sort of thing.
And that, I think, basically, that's what they passed.
So it's a pretty broad range of topics that they will be looking at as they affect counties.
But it's a good sign. I think it's an opportunity for us to get our message back to the legislators outside of the cloud of 500 bills that you're fighting against and get it done. Summer study reports come back in, and I think the legislature, especially if there's specific legislation in the summer study report, probably has a better, much better chance of passing than what we've seen in the past.
Okay. Other comments? Thank you for making that trip in the middle of the night evidently, and probably got home in the middle of the night.
That was Ken's fault.
Okay.
He wouldn't go the speed limit.
The only people passing.
Is there any other, any other liaison reports? How about any new business? Old business? If not, I'd like a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contracts.
My motion.
Second. A motion and a second for executive session for personnel and contracts. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes, 3 to 0.
If not, it would have been trouble.